Welcome to the September 16th City Council Work Session. The mayor is on the telephone, I think. Are you there, mayor?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and Allen is on the telephone. We already heard from him.
Yes, I am.
Allen Zalinka, that man. And the rest of us are here. And in the beginning, we're going to be discussing ADUs, but I intend to make a motion to start the meeting. I move that we don't take action tonight.
Second.
Excuse me, just a point of order. You're talking about final action on the ordinance as opposed to maybe revisions?
We can discuss, but I'm moving that we don't take action on it. We've all heard from many, many people who want more time, and I think we should respect that. And, okay, Mike, you're in the queue.
I would vote in favor of it because in principle, I agree with you that there's quite a lot that's been added along the way here that we need to discuss thoroughly. However, if we vote that, then the council can just vote later to override it because, you know, a majority's going to do what a majority's going to do, and I'm not sure we have those votes at the table. But even if we vote right now, we're not going to do something. In 10 minutes, we can vote to do it again. It doesn't make any difference. So it's, what I'm saying is, I don't know that this is the appropriate time for that vote.
You should never vote.
What did he say?
Allen, did you speak?
I'm interjecting.
That was funny, but thanks.
Okay, anyone else that wants to speak before? Emily?
Thank you. I think that so many things have changed since we first wrote the ordinance. And as an aside, I really didn't like that the ordinance came about through a straw poll. I thought that was just sort of our opinions, and it ended up being the ordinance. So I hope we don't do that again. But since then, we've had the remand and 2000, which is making big changes. But the ordinance we put out, we're changing it with putting the parking in and the coverage for the vehicles on the ground. And I think that with the changes from the state and the changes we want to make, we need to let people come and talk to us about those. And at the same time, of course, they could talk about any of the other things that are here. Originally, we were going to have Phase 1 and Phase 2 because we thought we could do Phase 1 really quickly and then have a very broad conversation. And that didn't work out. But we still have time to have the broad conversation that we had said we would. And, you know, I think that that's fair to everyone without getting into any of the specifics about what might be good or might be bad, or what some people like or don't. I think that we could certainly talk about those, but I really think we need to ask city manager to, whatever we ask about the way the ordinance is written, and bring it to a public hearing. Thank you.
Greg, and then Claire.
Two things. One, I'd like to get some time to be able to digest Councilor Yang's intended amendments and the motions she's intending to put forth on this. And then the second thing is, is what is our time limit in terms of turning this around? This is, you know, some heavy-duty stuff that we have to go through and also be able to coordinate with SB 1051 and House Bill 2001 as we move forward.
The new, well, let me break it down for you a little bit. The provisions of state law that said all of your ADU provisions have to be reasonable regulations related to siting and design is already in effect. So to the extent any of our provisions aren't, then those provisions are already violating current state law. Likewise, the provisions of state law that say you have to allow an ADU on any lot where you allow a single family in a zone for a single family, if that provision is already in effect, so to the extent we have provisions in our code that would prohibit an ADU where a single-family dwelling is allowed, those regulations are not compliant with current law. In addition, you now have a Luba case that says we cannot require owner occupancy. So any provisions in our code that require owner occupancy are currently noncompliant with state law. So the timeline for those ones, we're already in this place, to the extent we have any provisions that fall into that category. We are defending every single one of them and every single thing that comes up at this point to our best ability. The provisions where state law has said, yeah, we're doubling down and making sure it's clear that you can't allow owner occupancy, even if you're trying to do it as a standard, and also that you can't require ADUs to have onsite parking, what do they call it, off-street parking?
Off-street.
Either those, same thing. Those provisions, so really, for our purposes, it's just this onsite parking prohibition, that goes into effect on the 1st of January 2020. And that is the body of law that you're trying to address with this ordinance.
Can you just repeat that last?
Yeah, I get that. I'm just, I'm just, you know, contemplating this because the way I'm understanding the state law is that we have to, we have to do this in order to become compliant with state law, correct?
That's part of it. The other piece of it is that as applications come in and your staff, your staff is applying your zone, staff are bound by these state regulations. They apply the code and try to justify how they comply with the state regulations until we get a court case. Like the Luba one that talks about owner occupancy is now binding. Our offices advise staff, you can't require owner occupancy for ADUs anymore.
Okay.
Because, as a bind?
Because the Camps-Hughes case from Luba specifically said owner occupancy is not necessary to show it's an ADU. And if it's not necessary to show it's an ADU, then the only other way to possibly do it is to opt to try to justify it as a reasonable regulation related to siting and design, which we now know the legislature has clearly said is not. So at this point, anything by the time it got up to Luba would be remanded on an owner occupancy requirement.
Okay, Claire, we're just still discussing my motion to not vote tonight.
All right. So when did we not have a public hearing on this topic?
The public hearing was in May, and it covered, I mean, it covered everything that was part of the remand. It was on the ordinance before you, which included everything that was in the original ordinances from Phase 1. I feel like I'm doing my presentation but backwards here. And then it also included the owner occupancy, and I think there were five things that you guys had worked through at your work session back in February to remove, and then that was what the public hearing was on.
And, and now there are additional changes in this draft because of what's?
Yes, and the additional changes in the draft are only related to parking requirements or regulations pertaining to parking. I am going to cover all of those and what they are, but-
Yeah, we kind of cut staff off from making a presentation, which I think would have been nice before we put this particular motion out. I feel like this motion is kind of muddying our conversation. I'm not sure what, what the desire is. If the desire is to move this to a public hearing, then that could be part of the motion once we've had our discussion. And I might be amenable to that, but I'm not amenable to the motion that's on the table right now. So I think we've had a lot of input on this. We've gotten some emails, I think there might have been five, that said, please wait, please wait. We've got a state mandate. We've got a lot of work to do. I'm not inclined to delay. I might be happy if we make significant changes, then I think another public hearing could be justified. And, but I won't know that until I hear, you hear what I want to do and I hear what you guys want to do. Chris?
Yeah, you really asked a question I was going to ask, which is, this has been through a public hearing process. And what we're talking about tonight is not significantly different from what the public has had a chance to weigh in on. And so I think to say, oh, well, we need to stop and we need to talk about it some more, I'll be honest, it's a stalling tactic. It's not really a way to provide for greater public input. We've had public input. We've had a public hearing on this. And I think to delay it means to stall where we have to get to if you want to be in compliance with state law. Because right now, we're out of compliance with state law. Is that correct?
I can't say that for certain. I do, to the extent we have owner occupancy, we definitely are. The others, I'll continue to defend, and so I don't, wouldn't go on record to say we're not.
Yeah, and I wasn't speaking in a blanket terms, but in some cases, we are out of compliance with state law.
Yes.
So I think to consciously know you're out of compliance with state law and yet to continue to delay is what I'm calling a stalling tactic, and it's not going to lead to something that's a positive and productive outcome. I think we need to keep moving, and I think we need to vote on what it is we are or are not going to do so that people can have something tangible to react to. Because right now, it, as Claire says, very muddy, very unclear, and I don't think that's helpful to this process when things are not clear and when they're muddy.
Okay, second round, Mike, then Emily, and then I'm putting myself.
Mayor, Betty, can I be in the queue?
Yes, Allen. Okay, Mike, could we let Allen go first? Is this his first time?
Okay.
Is that all right?
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Betty.
Okay.
Mike, I don't necessarily think it's a stalling tactic. I think there's a lot of angst in the community about this because it's, it's quite unsettling, and it's something that's being imposed on us from the legislature. So I understand people's angst about it. So I don't necessarily think it's a stalling tactic to not take a vote on it tonight and also hear what people have. We can either do another public hearing, or we can do, we can have people address this at the next forum. Either one works for me. I don't know that we necessarily have to have a public hearing on it. But I think maybe, Chris, it's more of a public venting process as opposed to a stalling tactic where people can get off their chest what's on their minds and, and say their bit. I mean, I fully understand that we can't impose owner occupancy, and we can't impose a lot of these other things because the legislature and the Luba rules have said absolutely clear what we have to do. But there's a lot of people that don't know that in the community. So I don't think that it really hurts us because we're already out of compliance for the stuff that we're out of compliance for, to, to have a little bit of time for people to react to that.
Thank you. Mike, second round?
Well, this is quite a night and a topic. I agree with Allen, and I agree with Claire, and I agree with Betty, and I agree with Emily.
Well, an agreeable person you are.
Wow. The thing that I, Allen touched on, and I thought what Claire said was very reasonable, I, it was kind of what I was thinking, that maybe it's a little premature till I hear all the pieces. But I will say that I think some of what's being presented to us today has some staff changes to it that do make it significantly, or at least reasonably, different than previous discussions, different enough that we ought to have others weigh in on it. I know there are some amendments that are being, to be proposed, that I think are a radical change from what we've had and that, I mean, this council a few years ago decided with the R1 code amendments, the direction we were going, and I think those kind of are the final step to reverse all of it, and I'd kind of like to see us not do that. And so I, I think there's a lot of strong feeling in the community on both sides of this, especially in, with some vested partners with a stake in the outcome. And I, I don't think we need to do anything quickly that affects so many people so deeply. So I guess I'd, I'd vote in favor, like I said, but really, I'd like to have more of a discussion about all of this and see what comes of it, and probably let people weigh in on it, like Allen said, next forum or next public hearing before we go charging in.
Thank you. Emily?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions about the dates. We have to the end of this year, and then there's a date about July 2022. What's going on with those two dates?
The 2022 dates actually relate to other portions of House Bill 2001. If you recall, there are portions in there that require us to allow a duplex on every lot and then require us to allow triplexes, fourplexes, cottage clusters in other areas. Those code amendments have to be in place. We have three years essentially to put those particular amendments in place. The amendments related in House Bill 2001 regarding owner occupancy and parking, we only have until the end of this year. Otherwise, they go into effect January 1st.
Why are they different? Why are ADUs different than the other things?
Because the legislature wanted it that way.
Said so.
Thank you.
I believe, I, you know, that might be my answer for a lot of questions tonight.
That works.
But because it was amending, it isn't actually amending or creating a new body of law per se. The specific provisions they added just relate to text that's already in there and clarifying what they meant. And I think they figured we could handle that one more quickly. So it, they become operative on January 1st, 2020, as opposed to the rest of it.
So what happens if it, 2001 gets overturned next year, and we've made changes that we didn't really like? Then we go through all of this to change it back because the state says we don't have to anymore? What's that nightmare look like?
Yes. I mean, that is, you know, what, what you do by ordinance can only be undone by ordinance, so you'd go through the process again.
I just, I just wonder, you know, what sort of things we'd go over around again if it got overturned. And I just want to remind us that we voted against the home rule violation and that we would continue to work against this bill. So, you know, we're putting it into effect, and we're trying to make it go away. Thank you.
Betty, can I get in the queue?
Yes, mayor, you're next.
Thank you. Just, I think it's, you know, this agenda item was clear in your packet all along that this is a work session with possible action, so that was always a given that you might choose not to act tonight. And I think it, so that, I mean, it's fine if you want to vote right out of the chute. I would consider, though, having a more full presentation by staff, getting more of your questions answered, so that when you, if you decide to postpone a vote, you can be sort of clear with the public about what sort of information is most interesting to you, what you're hoping you'll hear from a public forum, that it could be fairly targeted and directed rather than just a blanket statement, we're not going to decide anything tonight. So just putting that out there for your consideration, that you're kind of, this is a little bit the tail wagging the dog. You could really have your full discussion, and then, you know, you have the option of not voting tonight. That was clear in the agenda packet.
Okay, thank you. I'm next to the queue, and I, I don't see how an ADU can be accessory if it's, if there's no thing there to be accessory to. But I do think that we need to respond to wide public concern. When the wide public are just becoming aware of this whole thing after the newspaper article, and we are going to discuss it, we're going to have a presentation and a discussion after we vote on this motion, but have Claire in the queue still. Claire?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, not all of us are going through this exercise just because the state has forced us. Some of us would like to relax the restrictions on the ADUs and might be very happy to do so, and I would include myself in that. So, I mean, I understand not all councilors feel that way, but some councilors are eager to make it easier for people in our community to create ADUs, and I am one of them.
Are we ready to vote on my motion? Okay, all in favor? One, two, three, four. Opposed? Three.
Allen's got to vote.
Allen, did you vote?
No.
You're voting no on the motion?
I vote, I vote yes.
Okay, the motion passes. So we will not act tonight, but we will go ahead with the, you're ready for the presentation now, right?
Yes.
You were ready before. Thank you.
I am ready. I'm still ready. I'm going to rewind us a little bit here. My name is Alyssa Hansen. I am with the Planning Division. And tonight, we are here to talk about accessory dwellings and cover what's been happening since 2017, and walk you through the ordinance that's before you. So just by way of background, in 2017, the state legislature did pass Senate Bill 2015, which we're referring to as the 2017 law. And it was really about, you know, promoting more housing statewide. It was part of a package that included more things than accessory dwellings, but we're really obviously just focused on the part about accessory dwellings. And what it did is provide a definition for accessory dwellings and a requirement that cities with a population of a certain size, greater than 2,500, need to allow in areas zoned for detached single-family dwellings at least one accessory dwelling in conjunction with a single-family dwelling. And those needed to be subject, or need to be subject to reasonable local regulations related to siting and design. In January of last year, City Council initiated a two-phase approach to the land use code amendments to implement this law. And it was kind of divided up into the where phase. I think you might remember that, like, where, where do we need to allow ADUs? Because we do allow them. We had been allowing them in a number of zones, most specifically the R1 low-density residential zone. We've allowed them there for a very long time. And then the later Phase 2 is going to be more about the how phase, and that was going to be having, you know, a more broader planning effort to talk about the regulations that apply to those. And that was kind of even before housing tools and strategies happened. So there was a lot of conversations going on in the community, and it just seemed to make sense to, to hear more at that time. So then in June of last year, you adopted the Phase 1 ordinances. There were two of them, and it really, what they mostly did is revise the land use code to allow accessory dwellings in a number of additional zones, and then it applied the standards from the R1 to those, to those, to accessory dwellings in those zones. That was subsequently appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by numerous parties, and then ultimately, the Land Use Board of Appeals remanded or sent that back to the city. They found that those were inconsistent with the 2017 state law because they effectively extended those R1, because the R1 regulations were applied to the new areas where ADUs were allowed, and we, the city hadn't determined whether or not those were reasonable local regulations related to siting design as, as the state law required. So that meant it got sent back to give you the opportunity to look at those particular standards and determine whether or not they were reasonable standards related to siting and design. That work began in February of this year with that work session and a really big matrix that had greenhouses, yellow houses, and red houses on it, if you remember. And you went through those standards line by line and determine, based on the reasonable standard related to siting and design criteria, whether or not they should be retained in the land use code or eliminated. And those were indeed straw polls, but we needed something to work off to have, for the public hearing. And so we took those, the results of those straw polls, plus everything that was adopted in the previous ordinances that was, that was adopted in June of last year. And that's what became the draft ordinance that went forward to your May 20 hearing of this year, which you heard from 33 people, and at least 20 of them, roughly 20 of them, were in support of removing barriers to accessory dwellings. And some of them even expressed support for eliminating more standards than apply, and there was concern from some that we weren't doing enough to, to meet the 2017 law. And there was also testimony from others that there was concern that the actions that were part of that ordinance would actually reduce existing neighborhood protections. So, and then we had followed up, well, we were planning to follow up with council action in June. However, there were two pending actions that we thought it would be prudent to wait for. And I'm going to let Emily cover those. After she covers those, I am going to walk you through what's in the ordinance before you. So the two things that we talked about in the work session before the public hearing, and I got back to you and said, you know, we should wait for action until we know about these things. One was a case that was pending at Luba that challenged a number of our standards, including our owner occupancy standard, and I'll talk about that. And the other was this update to the accessory dwelling unit law that we just talked about briefly a minute ago. So in the case, the appeal was from a planning director decision on what's called a zone verification. Zone verifications allow people to sort of ask the city a question, could I do this on this lot? And the planning director will issue a decision that could be appealed to Luba so they can understand what they could, what they could do before they go through and apply and do everything. So the zoning verification in this case asked whether they could put an ADU or a second house on a lot that already had a home on it. It was a rental house on the lot. It's in the university area, the R1 zone. It was an alley access lot. It was very clear in the materials that the owner lived in California and was going to continue to live in California, and the second house was going to be a second rental on the lot. Basically, it was kind of set up to sort of ring all the bells as you go through the Eugene code standards for secondary dwelling units. Staff looked at the proposal and said, you know, our code doesn't allow this. You have to, for one thing, have owner occupancy in one of the homes. Another thing, you can't do this on an alley access lot. So went through these things, and the decision was appealed to Luba. The city's decision really turned on, okay, our code doesn't allow this, and the state statute that, that applies to ADUs doesn't overrule our code in this case.
state statute that, that applies to ADUs doesn't overrule our code in this case, because we have to apply our code, because the use that this individual proposed was not an ADU. By definition, an ADU has to be used in connection with or as an accessory to a single-family dwelling on the lot, and they haven't showed any connection or accessory nature. So, you know, again, these two construction, these two buildings are not touching one another. There's no shared yard or facilities. The owner doesn't live on the lot, so that's not there. The only thing they share is a common landlord in California, and that's not enough of a connection for it to even be an ADU and then overrule our current code provisions. And Luba did not agree with that. Luba said, actually, all of those factors that we mentioned did not matter, because given the states, the state legislature's intent with these regulations to create more housing and lower barriers, that the, used in connection with or accessory to language in the definition of accessory dwelling was satisfied simply because the two structures would be on the same lot, which we had argued would eviscerate those words completely. Luba just simply disagreed. We appealed Luba's ruling to the Court of Appeals, but in the meantime, while it was at the Court, just beginning at the Court of Appeals, the legislature passed the 2019 law, House Bill 2001, which made it very clear that they were not friendly to requirements for owner occupancy. They specified that you can't use owner occupancy as a reasonable regulation related to siting and design, but given the tenor of the moment and the facts of that particular case, it was not one, a case or the time that we believed would be fruitful for defending owner occupancy at the Court of Appeals. We voluntarily withdrew the case. So the Court of Appeals hasn't ruled on that. Luba has, which we consider to be binding direction right now. That's a big explanation. So, the 2019 law that passed in the interim is 2001. It has a little provision in there that relates to ADUs, goes into effect in 2020, that says, "Reasonable regulations related to siting and design does not include owner occupancy requirements of either the primary or accessory structure, or requirements to construct additional off-street onsite parking." So for any ADU, you can't require that. Just for background, the elimination of owner occupancy was already in the proposed ordinance, because that went past your straw polls, understanding your straw polls were exactly that. We provided alternative findings with the packet for the hearing to demonstrate that all of these things were really in play. But the draft ordinance didn't include an owner occupancy requirement, so that hasn't changed. It's already out. The draft ordinance did include onsite parking requirements, and that is the only change that you see in the ordinance from the one that you had at, at the public hearing. Only relation, only things that relate to onsite parking. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So those are the legal things, and then I think Alyssa's going to walk through what is in the draft ordinance in a little more detail for you.
Okay, so I'm going to go through, and this is really taken from your attachment A to the agenda item summary, which was summary of proposed changes, but I'm going to just expand on them a little bit more than what's, what's provided in that particular attachment. So, the first three changes are really, I would consider them housekeeping changes that are carried forward from, not only from the previous ordinances you adopted last year, but they were also, again, in the ordinance that was part of your public hearing in this May. The first one replaces all references with secondary dwelling to a sec, accessory dwelling, and that's really just to be consistent with the state law. It also clarifies that accessory dwellings are not accessory buildings. You might be wondering why we're including that, but an accessory building would be a garage, an art studio, a poolhouse, a cabana. And there is sometimes confusion that whether or not the standards of accessory buildings apply to accessory dwellings and vice versa. So we just wanted to make it very clean and very clear that they are separate and different things. And then the third on this slide, it replaces the definition of accessory dwelling with that that was provided in the 2017 state law. Oh, my bullet points disappeared. All right, so next are, are two things that were also included. So both of these were included in the ordinances that you adopted last year, and they were, again, included in the ordinance that was before you in May. And this is, really addresses that where part of where accessory dwellings can be allowed, and it explicitly adds them to the six zones listed above, you know, agricultural through the Blair Historic Special Area Zone. Again, they're already allowed in R1 low-density residential zone, and they're allowed explicitly in a number of the special area zones as well that permit accessory dwellings. And then the second point there, it clarifies that, that accessory dwellings are in Jefferson West Side Special Area Zone and Chambers Special Area Zone. They're allowed, but they're referred to there as additional one-family dwellings. That was, I, when was that added? That was actually added last year as well, as part of the 2018 ordinances that you adopted, and we got to redo here. And then, the next is, this again was included in the ordinances that you adopted last year and carried forward into the draft ordinance provided in May. It applies those R1 residential standards that apply to accessory dwellings to accessory dwellings in these five zones. And then, finally, these are the standards that are proposed to be removed. So, the first five of these bullets are what you discussed, or what you, you took your, your initial straw votes on in February. These are the regulations that were included in the May ordinance for that public hearing, and it's the last one that's, the, the new item that is what's included in your ordinance tonight. I'm going to go through these just real quickly. So prohibit accessory dwellings on new flag lots. That was something that was added in 2014 when the standards for accessory dwellings on flag lots changed, it changed the size and the pole dimensions. But there was also a prohibition on, well, you could create a new flag lot that met those dimensional standards, but you could not have an accessory dwelling on that particular flag lot. Next would be the owner occupancy requirements. Again, as Emily explained very thoroughly, given the recent Luba decision and the recent state law, this has been proposed to be removed. You also had talked about it in your, your February work session, which is why it was originally at, in the ordinance for the May public hearing. Maximum bedrooms, this, the standard is that no, that the accessory dwelling is contained no more than two bedrooms. Again, in February, you determined, or gave preliminary input, I should say, about whether or not this was a reasonable regulation related to siting and design. And it kind of, it moved to that, removed from the Land Use Code category. The next one is maximum occupancy. This particular standard only applies in the three university neighborhoods, and it, it limits the occupancy in, of people in the accessory dwelling based on the number of occupants in the primary dwelling and the determination. And February, again, was that it was not a reasonable standard related to siting and design. And then dog keeping, I know it's everybody's favorite. That one, there's a standard that, actually, there's other dog keeping standards in the code where it just talks about the premise. This one made it very specific to how many you could have with your, your ADU. Again, in, in February, you, your discussion led to that you did not believe that this was a reasonable standard related to siting and design. So that was also struck for, you know, proposed to be struck in the, the May ordinance. And then the last street bullet, the last bullet is about off-street parking, which is also referred to as onsite parking. So you'll hear both of those terms, just depending on where it comes from. So as Emily mentioned, House Bill 2001 was clear about what we needed to do related to onsite parking, that it's not a reasonable regulation related to siting and design. So this, I want to make it, I think, say for the third time, this was not provided in the ordinance before you in May. I will say it's something that you looked at back in February. It's something that has been raised in the testimony all along, but it was not part of that ordinance. And then I'm just going to walk you through what those changes are. So these are the only changes from the May version of the ordinance. So there's three bullet points here, but the first one is really about eliminating parking requirements for accessory dwellings. And we, that was really what, what the House Bill calls for. It would remove regulations that require onsite parking for accessory dwellings in all the zones where they're called accessory dwellings, and would also remove onsite parking requirements for those zones that call accessory dwellings additional one-family dwellings. So I want to point out that this is the only place in the ordinance that addresses, that, that addresses special, the Jefferson West Side Special Area Zone and the, the Chambers Zone. We tried to, as little as possible, based on your direction, make any changes to those particular zones, but when it comes to parking, we realized that there are, there were some surgical pieces that needed to happen, some surgical amendments that would need to happen to make sure that we're consistent with state law. And then the next two bullets are related, these are some standards. These two standards only apply to accessory dwellings in the three university neighborhoods. And the first one is about vehicle use limitations, and that's really about regulating a maximum area covered by paved and unpaved vehicle use areas, including but not limited to driveways, onsite parkings, and turnaround, and it limits it to 20% of the lot area. Because that, you know, really relates to the construction of additional off-site parking, we believe that it was pretty clearly needed to be removed. Again, this only applies to the three university neighborhoods. I know there was a concern in some of the testimony that's came forward recently about our stormwater standards and that this is really important. But we do have pretty robust stormwater standards that apply independently. If you come in for a building permit, you will have to comply with those stormwater standards. The, the last bullet point is related to alley access driveways and parking, and these apply when, not to alley access lots, but to, if you have a lot that has both street frontage and then abuts an alley, and you're proposing to take your access for the accessory dwelling from the alley, then there's a whole host of standards that apply about how that parking has to be designed. And again, because that parking is no longer required, we didn't think it may, really made sense to continue to have standards that apply to parking that's not required. One of the concerned, one of the things that's been raised is that there's, you know, not enough parking in these neighborhoods already, that parking's a concern. And I'd want to point out that if this is left in, it would make it more difficult and probably challenging, and maybe a disincentive for people who wanted to provide parking, like, so parking wouldn't be required, but you could voluntarily provide parking. And then if you were going to voluntarily repart, do parking, then these standards would apply, and I think that would probably be a disincentive and be counter to, you know, the goals of, of making sure there's enough parking in these neighborhoods. Emily, was there anything else you wanted to say about these standards? These are really the only changes.
Not at this point. You know, I think because the law is clear about these standards, that we cannot require onsite parking, that at least with respect to the straight-up requirements that they be provided, it made sense to include them here. We're supposed to comply with that provision by the end of the year, and subjecting that clear requirement to a public process. It's, it seemed like this was the better place to put it, since those issues have been raised throughout this process. And that's why we felt at liberty to, or actually, like, we, we, it was necessary that we include the elimination of those requirements throughout the code in here. Now, I think we'll just respond to questions.
Questions or comments? Greg?
So, there's still some issues, I think, that need to be worked out here with regard to ADU. So, could we, for instance, have a prohibition on Airbnbs for, you know, ADUs or for primary residences? You know, I know people do, do, do various things of that nature. I would like to see some more stability across the board, so that, you know, if someone is coming in and they want to, you know, live in a, in an ADU, if someone's living in a primary, that it just doesn't turn into, you know, this kind of churning rental kind of thing, that we have some stability across the board with regard to, you know, housing and, you know, the living conditions that we're talking about, because, you know, somebody could just, you know, has been mentioned to us before in other, you know, hearings, is, you know, people can come in and say, "I'm just going to turn this around for, you know, a couple of Airbnbs," or whatever the case may be. What standards can we, you know, effectively put in to, you know, protect, you know, the integrity of neighborhoods?
That issue is actually coming before you in a couple of weeks, or potentially next week.
September 23rd is when it's currently scheduled as a work session.
So, I, in response, there are, you definitely can regulate them. Some jurisdictions do. Limiting the, your regulations specifically to ADUs is probably not the way that you want to go about. Sounds, from what you're raising, it's a bigger policy question than just what happens in the ADUs. ADUs is certainly something that you could consider in your conversation about short-term rentals, is what we usually call them. And I would, because these short-term rentals can take a lot of different forms, the couch in the living room, the, you know, it could be all kinds of different forms, I wouldn't suggest that you address, bring it into the ADU ordinance, but instead address short-term rentals globally in this upcoming, you know, work.
Okay.
Mike?
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that staff gave us a good presentation of the things they changed from their perspective. I, I want to hear all perspectives on that, so I'll look forward to our next public forum to hear other people's thoughts on that and other residents before we make a final decision. When we do, I, I had a motion for tonight that I, I didn't put out in an email to everybody, because I just kind of thought of it on the way here, and I checked with our attorney. So, because I didn't have time to do that, I'll give you advance warning of it. So when we do come to vote, I'm going to propose it. I'm going to move that we create a people's MPT, and that we direct the manager to come, have staff come back to us with a 10-year property tax exemption on any additional structural value for anyone who builds an ADU. And since, I'd like to structure it very much like we do the, the current form of MPT, where there are public benefits for doing so. And one of the things we might consider, I don't know if it's a good idea or bad just yet, but I think if we're willing to do this, one of the ideas we might consider is to put some of these standards back in as public benefit criteria in the people's MPT. So, just a thought. When we get to making motions, I'll do that, too.
This is for some future date, you're warning?
Well, I, whenever we're going to make motions and vote, I think we decided we're not going to do that tonight.
We're not going to do that tonight. Okay.
So the next time we do, when we do, I'll have an amendment that will put this forward, and I just want to let everybody think about it.
I have a question about the point of order. So, my understanding is that people can make motions to help staff understand what should be in a revised ordinance, but that you won't take final action tonight. And I think that the kind of motion that you're talking about could be made tonight. I don't think that that's inconsistent.
I see other people nodding their heads, so I'm just going to make that motion. I move that the manager come back to us with this thing.
So I heard you say, provide a motion, or move to come back with a language to allow a 10-year property tax exemption for any additional property value from a new ADU.
Building an ADU.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. The reason that's important to me is because one of the big complaints we always get is that everybody And I'm sorry, but this community has argued for better part of a year and a half about ADUs and whether or not the standards are the issue behind why we only have four permits to build them in the previous year, and it's not. It's because they're not affordable. They don't pencil. And this is a way to make them affordable, so they actually get built. So I hope, all we're asking tonight is to allow staff to come back to us with a fleshed-out idea.
Okay, we're now discussing Mike's motion. Claire?
Thank you. I'm glad we're allowing motions. That was kind of working me out that we weren't going to do any motions because I'm anxious to hear Councilor Yeh's motions. So I seconded this. We'd have to change the acronym because the multi-unit.
I'm not crazy about, well, it's multiple units.
But anyway, I am interested in discussing ways to increase the affordability of creating ADUs, of whether that would be to exempt their property taxes or reduce their SDCs or whatever the dynamic might be. So that's why I seconded the motion, because I think it's a conversation worth having and doesn't necessarily fall into our land use ordinance, so it would need to be a separate work session. So I am interested in learning more about what would be strategies we could take to do that.
I mean, what informed Councilor Clark was that the state would not allow us to waive any state taxes. The state would impose pretty substantial limitations on this idea, but that doesn't mean we couldn't come back to you and let you know what might be possible.
This is all I'm asking.
On this motion, Jennifer?
Yeah, so like Claire was saying, can we add to that the other things that might get to the same outcome, like waiving SDCs or some other things? Not just Mike's specific idea, but maybe a couple.
Mike, is that a friendly? And other incentives?
You want to add discounting SDCs to my motion? Yes, absolutely. I'll accept that as a friendly.
No.
Only for transportation.
Only for transportation.
Any other discussion on Mike's motion, as Emily?
Well, this is about Jennifer's.
Have you? Is there a?
I forgot what the second part was.
To add SDC discounts?
Okay, I might go for that part.
But you're the second.
But I'm not going to go for a tax exemption, so if you combine them, then I can't help you.
We'll just learn about all of it.
Okay, thanks.
Chris?
Thank you. I actually really like the idea of providing a property tax exemption for building affordable housing. I think that's a real, it's a tool that would help people to be able to make these things more affordable. I think that's great. And I think that's the motion that's currently on the table, but I know there was some additional conversation about complying with community benefits and requiring that kind of stuff. I don't want to have anything to do with that because if somebody wants to build a house and they're required to provide community benefit, I don't think that's what we're trying to get at. But if you're sticking with just the property tax exemption piece, I think that's great and I can vote for that.
That's what I was going to clarify. I just want to make sure. So when, because I heard that same comment. And so if the motion passes, I just want to make sure if the intent of the people that vote for the motion is that also, and then I'm not sure what we come back with on that piece, I think we can come back with, if we want to make ADUs more affordable, property tax may be one, SDCs may be another. There may be something else in there, too. And so I think we would want to at least have the latitude to come back with additional things, not just those two, if that's the intent. But I would want clarification on what you just talked about, Chris, on the community benefit piece of that.
Okay, we'll do that later.
Where are we now?
I'm done. He did this, so I'm okay.
So I can get my head around a property tax exemption. I'm a little bit more concerned about the SDCs because we have a gap right now between what we need in terms of SDCs to fund our parks and our other parts of our infrastructure. Yeah, we do. We had a presentation on that. So, you know, I'm a little leery about exempting SDCs for a program like this, but I can get my head around a tax exemption.
I see, Mike. I think we all should ask for a tax exemption. Mike, you're next.
I apologize, brother. I interrupted.
You're getting the queue, Mary.
I'm sorry. I'm a little too lax here tonight. So we had, the last time we had the conversation about SDCs for parks, I asked a very specific question. And we're going to make decisions on this in a few weeks. And the answer came back very, very, very clearly, that we would make $58 million of new parks, we would do $58 million of new parks work if we left the SDC increase at zero. In other words, if we don't touch that SDC rate at all, we'll still have $58 million of new parks work done above and beyond the bond. So I just want to say, we do have some room with the parks SDCs. Now, the other ones, maybe there's some more argument to be made. But certainly with that one, we do, and we're going to make that decision soon. So I hope we don't forget that that was a very clear answer I got when we had that conversation.
Whether we're still discussing your motion or not, but Allen's in the queue. Allen?
So can someone repeat the motion at this point?
What's the motion we're about to vote on? Yes.
People's MPT and SDC discounts.
May I get a little clarification before?
There was other stuff about other things and whatever. I'm not sure if it's just limited to those two things.
I'm only being so relaxed about this because you're just asking for information. To be clear, this is not how the final motion's going to go down. But Counselor Clark, my understanding is this would maybe come on the heels of an action on ADU ordinance. This isn't something that would have to come back to you before you act on an ADU ordinance?
No.
Can you clarify that? Am I wrong?
No, this is in conjunction with ADUs. My reasoning for this is that, it's my proposition that the standards and the law aren't the thing holding up ADUs. It's the cost. So if we're willing to incentivize building them, I think some of them might actually get built. If we're not, we can change all the laws about it we want, but none of them are going to get built. So that's the reasoning behind doing it. And this is to give people the increase in taxes that they would pay as soon as they build an ADU, because they'll pay more property taxes immediately. So this is to give them a 10-year discount on that, a waiver.
So I think Emily's question was, does that discussion need to occur before you continue the conversation on the ADU ordinance itself? That could come subsequent to that.
And?
It can come in either order.
I'd like it to be voted on at the same time as this. So we may need a work session on the returning information before we include it in the ADUs, yes?
But we shouldn't hold up on moving forward with the ADU provision. Okay, I understand the motion.
Well, I'm not sure yet now. So I want to make sure, because what I heard you just say is you want to be able to vote on both of them at the same time, which is different than what I think you just said. And so I just want to have clarity. So what that would mean is if that's on the same time, we would come back with a work session and potential, depending how that works, a public hearing around that. Could be another public hearing on the ADU, and then come back at one common work session for that, which is different than ADU moves forward and then this can trail behind it. So I just want to make sure that that's what everybody's voting on, and then we'll make that happen if that's true.
So is that something we need to vote on now?
No, you're just clarifying my.
You're just asking them to bring back a motion, right? We don't need to vote on that.
Counselor Zelenka asked what the motion was.
Including the SDCs. And there was another about other ideas.
So prior to seeking, prior to proposing council's final action on ADU ordinance, direct the city manager to come back with a memo addressing the possibility of a 10-year property tax exemption for any additional property value obtained from the addition of an ADU.
An SDC credit.
And an SDC discount for ADUs or credit, or other incentives identified by staff.
Financial incentives, yeah.
Other financial incentives identified by staff.
So that's a motion tonight.
Don't we already have SDU credit for ADUs?
Only apply for transportation, so that's the one infrastructure that has come. Oh, look, here's Denny.
I think currently.
Can you put me in the queue?
We can verify this, but currently, if it's an income-eligible tenant, you can get an SDC credit. And I believe we've also given low-income housing rental tax exemptions, LRTs, to ADUs that have low-income, income-eligible tenants in them. So in effect, we do have a tool right now that addresses some of the SDC credits and tax exemptions if it's an income-eligible tenant, which is a really positive thing. I think there's some problems with the people's MPT in state law. We can only give them a MPT because we have a state law that says you can give them a MPT, a property tax exemption. And so I think the answer when we come back would be you'd have to change state law in order to give a market-rate tax exemptions for ADU. But we could come back.
You two need to fight about it and come back.
Well, it couldn't be a MPT. It would have to be something else.
I think Allen is.
And so, really, it's really about the parks SDCs, that's about all that's left. And it would only apply to the city Eugene part of the property tax, because we couldn't impose on anybody else unless we change state law.
Okay.
For the MPT part, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Who am I asking?
Those are two questions.
We need a better name for it. We'll vote on that, too. He's confusing.
So the property tax exemption.
Mayor.
Yeah, I want to be in the queue.
I have you in the queue, Mayor.
So my question is twofold. One is, the property tax exemption, unless we change state law, would only apply to city property taxes. Is that correct? Second question is, the SDU waivers or reductions, since we already do one for transportation, we can do some for low income. The only SDU left would be parks?
These are the things we would address in the memo. I don't think anyone here is ready to give you definite answers on those, but those would be things we could address in this memo that we're talking about.
Allen, are you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The mayor is next in the queue, and then Claire.
Mayor? I just want to check in with staff and council sort of around the timeline here because staff has been clear with us around the timeline of where we are with owner occupancy, now where we are with adding these parking conditions and anything else that might come out of this meeting in terms of changes to this ordinance. And I just want a little clarity with staff on this proposed memo about a tax exemption for new ADUs. The sort of timeline, like is that going to be a complicated thing for you to put together? Is that a work session we can get to quickly? I'm a little concerned about throwing off our timeline in terms of meeting the state requirement to be in full compliance with 1051 and 2001 versus then considering an additional change, which sounds very worthy of exploration, but I just, I don't want to throw off one timeline in order to do this second thing. So I'm just sort of getting back to Mike, but we have to do these concurrently or can we do these exponentially in order to get one piece of this job taken care of before we do the next piece?
Mayor, I'll answer that a couple of ways. One, the motion, I think, currently says concurrent, so that's where that is.
Right. Right. No, I understand that. I'm sort of questioning the timeline for staff in terms of how much time this would take and how much this might set back our decision-making on the ordinance itself.
I would anticipate that it would set it back. How far, I don't know yet. We would have to get back with the council on that. It will be not insignificant work. I just don't know how significant it will be. And we'll just have to get back to you on that if the motion goes forward.
We'll see if it passes or not. Claire, and then Mike again.
Okay, so I'm starting to regret seconding the motion because now we're discussing in detail the things that we should discuss at the work session that the motion is asking for. I'm not actually on board with the concurrent piece, though I understand it. I am more comfortable and wish we were devoting more time to the topic at hand, which is our land use code, and letting that go forward and having this follow behind as possible. So the original motion didn't say concurrently, that I recall. So when I seconded it, that wasn't part of my thinking. I think it's a very worthy conversation. I think we should have it. But I don't know that it's necessary for it to be in tandem with the land use regulation. I think if it comes after, that might actually be easier because then we'll know what the landscape is that we're dealing with in terms of what kinds of increasing affordability measures we might want to put in place.
I'll accept that as a friendly.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Mike, did you need to speak again?
Nope, just did it.
So he just did it, he said.
That's it, that's it. Emily?
I don't want to do any tax exemptions, but I will vote for this just to hear about the other things. But when it was just the tax exemption, I would have voted no. I would like to get this thing moving along first, so thanks.
Okay, all in favor of Mike's motion. Opposed, one. Allen.
Allen's got a vote.
Allen, did you vote?
No.
No, you didn't ask me yet.
Well, now I'm asking you.
I vote no.
Okay, that's two no's and six aces. Motion passes. And I want a tax exemption, too.
Build an ADU.
Do we have further discussion? Jennifer?
Can I do mine now? All right, now that we got that other way. So I emailed you all, and I'm sorry that it was a little late getting to you, so some of you may not have had a time to read my motions. And I appreciate staff helping me turn my ideas into actual, real things. So I'm just going to start with the first one. Move to direct the city manager to revise the draft ordinance to eliminate the ADU standards for the AG, R1, R2, R3, R4, and SE zones that apply only to flag lots, making ADUs on flag lots in those zones subject to the same flag lot standards that apply on regular non-flag lot lots in the same zone.
Second.
So I can say something real quick. So I just, when I drafted all of these, my idea was looking, thinking of all the public feedback we've had and all the emails and all the people talking to me, which ones of these do I find the most unreasonable? And these are the four that I chose, flag lots specifically, because I have a flag lot behind my house. That means someone lives behind my house. The people that live next to me don't, but they also have someone behind their house. It's not significantly different than any other lot to me. And so making them, pulling them out as if they are special in some way, to me, did not seem reasonable. So that was my thinking.
Mike?
Thank you, Betty. You've seen the list, the full list of Councilor Yeh's proposed amendments?
Yes.
And the email that came?
Yes.
Am I right to assume that these parallel very closely the votes that we built into the R1 Code amendments in 14?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is essentially reversing everything that we did when we passed that and because we have a different vote at the table. I think that's unfortunate in the sense that there were an awful lot of members of neighborhood associations, and frankly, most of whom were in South Eugene, who were dramatically in favor of the importance of these at the time. And I think that we're unnecessarily muddying the progress that we might make with ADUs with a fight that has been going on for a while, was solved for a while, but some people were unhappy with. So we're kind of picking that fight again and attaching it to the issue of ADUs. I hope we don't do that. I think that, I get that elections have consequences and we have different votes at the table, so that's reasonable. I just don't want to see us unnecessarily muddy this issue because, like Claire, I too would like to see more of these built. And actually, I'd like... And actually, I'd actually like to see them actually get built, rather than just us talk about having them built. Most of the people who build them will tell you that they don't pencil. So I don't want to see us muddy this with a whole separate kind of argument. Thank you. That's why I'll vote against.
Chris?
Yeah, actually, I think Mike raises the essential point here, is that staff's recommendation for R1 Code Amendments in 2014 were basically thrown away and replaced entirely with something that had been generated and proposed by one member of the council and voted on, which had, I think, I will say unintended consequences. Flag lots is simply one of them. When I look at the Housing Tools and Strategies Evaluation that was prepared for us, from 2008 to 2014, approximately nine ADUs were permitted per year during this timeframe. However, after the City of Eugene adopted more restrictive ADU requirements in 2014, the annual number of ADU permitted units declined significantly. From 2015 to 2017, only seven ADUs were permitted in total, not per year. So I would say the 2014 Code Amendments we passed had a profound impact on ADU development and that rolling some of these back is one significant way we can make ADUs more able to be developed. And the flag lot restriction, at the time it was passed, I remember the estimate was it would be between 300 and 600 people that would not be able to build on lots that they thought they were able to be built on. Willie Memes, if you remember when he came to the council, was exactly in that situation. And so I think this is an example of something we need to do in order to make ADUs more available as a, as a possibility on flag lots.
Claire?
Thank you. So as I think I've...
Get in the queue, please.
Every time we've talked about this, I was the single no vote on those changes in 2014. And I feel that code was deliberately designed to severely limit property owners from developing ADUs with the desired effect of limiting how many people can live in a neighborhood. I think it was very deliberate. I think those Code Amendments are too strict and that most of them should be eliminated. I think, you know, setbacks, height limits, perhaps maximum lot coverage are legitimate things to retain. Basically, I feel that if a requirement is imposed on a single-family home, is not imposed on the single-family home, it shouldn't be imposed on the accessory dwelling unit. You know, we have a housing crisis and we have an obligation to expand housing options in our community. And I think loosening these regulations, as Chris has just pointed out, will not actually result in a huge boom in ADUs. I think even if we adopt some kind of incentives, you know, about nine a year were built before that. That is not a huge number of additional units in any particular set of neighborhoods. So I think I'm eager to go through Councilier's motions. I think they address a lot of the things that I did not like about what we did in 2014. And this will provide options for families and property owners who need or want to build an ADU.
Okay, I'll put myself in for just a brief, and then I have Mike for second round and Emily for first one pretty soon. But I think...
I'd like to be in the queue, too. Please, Betty.
Okay, thank you. I did have you there, yes. You're next. I'm just going to say one thing. I think we're being way too casual about trying to change things that had a lot of thought put into them. And it's, also, we're allowing the state to murder the language by calling extra houses accessory. But next up is Alan.
I have two questions. One is, can staff please give me an explanation of what this, the impact of what this would do? And second is, I have about eight questions on the proposed ordinance, and I don't know when I'm going to, if we're going to even get to those.
Yes, I just, you, I am looking about the question regarding flag lots. So there are a number of standards that pertain to accessory dwellings on flag lots, starting with they need a larger lot size than any other lot would require to have an accessory dwelling. And then they also have, let me get to the right page here. There are a number of standards related to the width of the access pole, how many dwellings can take access off that driveway. They have a specific building height, interior yard setback that differs. There are paving width standards that are different and driveway setback standards, landscaping standards, and I believe that is it. But those are all standards that would apply to an ADU on a flag lot that don't apply to an ADU on a typical lot.
And this would eliminate those restrictions?
It would, yes. It would make it so that if you're on a flag lot, you're treated just like any other lot.
Okay. So I have a question about square foot. I don't understand how within AB 2001, we're even able to have a limitation on square feet of a lot for ADUs. How is that, how can we still do that within, in the context of AB 2001?
So are lot standards that relate to, I can't remember what your vote was in particular. Maybe Emily remembers where in the straw poll, what you determined, how that relates to siting and design. What I wanted to point out is that the lot size standards equate to density. So right now, in R1, for a regular lot, you have to have a minimum lot size of 6,100 square feet to have an ADU. If you look at the density for, in the, for the R1 zone, in order to have two units, you need 6,100 square feet. So they align exactly with that, that minimum lot size does. I believe that, looking at the matrix that Emily provided, minimum lot size, you all, we started with, it relates to siting.
So limiting the size of a lot, or having a minimum lot size for an ADU is permissible under HB 2001, regardless of the flag lot or regular lot?
You might remember how difficult those determinations were to make when we were attempting to sort of put together an ordinance for consideration. The findings that would, that we would make to try to justify it as a reasonable regulation related to siting and design are in your packet on page 35, that lot area minimum standards, and that's what we're talking about, right? Are regulations relating to siting because they set out the necessary specifications for sites on which an ADU can and cannot be placed. Regarding the specific regulation that a flag lot be at least 12,500 square feet, it's reasonable because flag lots are already serving as a form of infill in a neighborhood and a potential for doubling that impact. Again, with an accessory dwelling raises concerns about impacts on surrounding properties and Goal 14 livability. So there's actually a good full page of findings that we prepared to defend that provision if that ends up being a retained provision in the ordinance.
So would this motion eliminate that?
Yes, this motion would make those findings unnecessary because you would have removed...
Only for flag lots.
For flag lots.
For flag lots.
Right.
This stuff on page 35.
Yeah. For flag lots, you require 12,500 square feet, and for regular lots, it's 6,100 square feet.
So it would make flag lots 6,100 feet.
That's right, except we made it so, we would make it so it wouldn't include the pole portion, so that the...
Right.
Main portion of a lot had to be 6,100 square feet. That seems like what we do for other lots.
Okay. My other question about, when are we going to get back, when are we going to have enough time to ask a whole bunch of questions?
Never.
We only have like 15, 20 minutes left.
My assumption...
Maybe that's rhetorical.
Yeah, my assumption would be is we'd have to schedule another work session to work through any questions on the original, as well as, I don't know how far we'll get on Jennifer's tonight either, so.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Emily's next, and then Mike's down for a second round.
Thank you. How many flag lots do we have that would be affected by this?
I don't have that number with me, but that's something I can come back with.
Because, you know, that might make a difference as to how many people this would, you know, if it's five people, then so what? If it's 500 lots, that might make a difference, I'd like to know. I've had a continuing question about density, and density is based on units, not people. And so how does the ADU additions work as far as calculating density?
So density requirements apply, so if it's in the R1, there's no minimum, meaning you can have a large lot and have two units if, to make sure that you don't exceed the maximum of 14 units per acre. That's why we have the lot size of 6,100 square feet, because that equates to, two units on 6,100 square feet equates to 14 units per acre.
Wonderful, thank you. Great answer. I guess that's all. I'm, well, I'm concerned because they are kind of landlocked already. And if you're on the street, even though you, well, you have those planting strips, you have more of a view of land across the street. And if you're in the middle, on all four sides, you have other houses. So I think they, they are different, and because you don't have that, that street view, that maybe they should be a little bit larger. If I really felt they were the same, then yeah, the same lot size would be, would be perfect. But I don't think they really are the same. Thanks.
Okay, Mike for second round, and then maybe we can vote.
Thank you, Betty. I think that's perfectly timed. 14, is it .2 or .4?
14.28.
Yeah. That's our maximum density for R1. And if you say two units and less than square, you know, if you, if you allow for two units and get that down to 4,000 square feet, which by the way, was what was proposed for the R1 Code Amendments, is a backdoor way of redefining R1. And that's why I proposed those things. It had nothing to do with some of the things that were mentioned. It had to do about protecting the property value, the private property rights of people who owned R1 investments in their homes. That was the reason for doing it, quality of life in the neighborhoods of our community. It wasn't cynical about anything other than, that was my belief, was the best way for us to protect quality of life. The legislature has a different idea about how we ought to live and how densely. And I think it's going to have consequences in livability. And I think people are going to be upset about the consequences of how, what gets built and who lives in it and how it feels in their neighborhoods. So I think we should be a bit more charitable to one another when it comes to this stuff, and we'll probably get through it easier if we're willing to talk about this as what it is, which is a difference in what we think livable, a livable community and a livable neighborhood looks like. For me, 4,000 square foot lot size is way too dense, and I don't want to live in that. I wouldn't. So I'd fight to protect a minimum 6,000 square feet. And that's what I did when I made the proposal for those R1 Code Amendments. As a part of it, there were many others that were about protecting livability in our community. And I hope we'll stick with that.
Well said, Mike.
Is there another? I hear someone else.
Yeah, you heard Alan.
You heard Alan, yeah.
Alan, did you want another round on this?
No. No, thank you.
Okay, let's vote on the general, oh, sorry, Greg?
Yeah, I'm not ready to vote for or against this motion. I, I need a little bit more time to digest it than just over the weekend. So I'm going to move to table the motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of tabling? Alan? Opposed? No. Two, three, Alan?
I support tabling it.
Okay. Stabled. Claire?
So I just want to say, my comments were not meant to be directed personally at any particular city councillor. In fact, I was thinking of a city councillor who's no longer at this table. And those councillors were bringing those forward on behalf of people in the community. So this is a community effort and that, and, but I think it was, and it still is, an effort to limit how many people can live in a neighborhood. And you, councillor Clark, said, who lives in the neighborhood? So I think these are very touchy issues. And I think our code before allowed about nine a year. And, you know, maybe if we made them more easily accessible in terms of affordability, there would be 15 a year. And if you spread those out around the city, it's not going to have an undue impact. Now, I understand there are neighborhoods, university being one of them, that, you know, are ripe for development in a way that other neighborhoods are not. And, and I do want to be sensitive to that. But I think there's, you know, there was an effort to limit these. It was successful. And now some of us would like to reverse that.
Right.
And the legislature is giving us a mandate.
And, yes, I have you, I have a turn now, just briefly. I think that people did want to live in less dense neighborhoods and chose their houses for that reason. And they had a right to. And they have a right to expect it to be what they, what they chose. Mike wants another.
Yeah, just real quick, I, when I said who, a part of this conversation has been about restrictive and racially-based laws over time. And I don't want to leave an ambiguity, and I know you didn't mean one. I just don't want to leave an ambiguity in that. What I meant by that very specifically is what percentage of a neighborhood is renters and what percentage of a neighborhood is homeowners? And I think we're going to create, in the process of what we're doing right now, because of how the financing of homes work, and that's something I do every day, I think we're going to end up with entire neighborhoods of people renting that are going to have a different, with predominantly absentee landlords, especially around the university, that's going to create a different character to our neighborhoods than, than what we have now and maybe what some folks might want or hope for. So that's what I meant by...
Jennifer, then, Chris.
Yeah, I think there are plenty of people who have brought up issues that boil down to behaviors. Like, they're concerned not about who's next door, but the behaviors of who's next door. Personally, I don't think land use code is where we are supposed to deal with people's behaviors. We don't assume that just because you're a renter, you're going to be a horrible neighbor and you're going to create all these behavior problems. Whereas if you're a homeowner, you're not. I don't, I think if you want to do something about those behaviors, there are places to do that. And, you know, maybe that's something we really seriously need to look at, along with some other stuff, you know, coming up. But land use is not the, the place for it. I also want to say that all of these things we've been talking about since 2018, these are not new. None of these are new. They're all things we've been talking about. All of us know all about these things because we've been talking about it, and people have been emailing me, us, and we've been discussing it at a public hearing. It's not new. We have a difference of opinion. That's what we have. We don't all agree, and it makes it really hard because we all want to do the best, the right thing. We all want nice, livable neighborhoods. We just disagree about what that's about. And at some point, we're going to have to make decisions about what we're going to do. And putting it off longer and longer is not going to help change because we're not going to learn anything new. We know everything we're going to know. And, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Chris is next, and we have about three minutes left in this meeting.
Okay, yeah, I was just...
Can I get in the queue, too?
Yes, Alan. If, well, Chris will be fast, so you have time.
I'll be fast. I was just going to say, in a way, it's perhaps a real positive thing that we're finally beginning to touch on the issue of density versus livability. We've talked all around it. We're trying to work with it in terms of codes, in terms of compliance, in terms of a whole host of things. But it really boils down to, is there a mutually exclusive choice between density and livability? And it keeps coming back as if you can have one or you can have the other, but you can't have both. And I, and I don't think that's really true, as if a certain-sized lot ensures livability or a certain mix of... livability or a certain mix of whether they're renters or homeowners somehow ensures livability. I do think we really need to have the conversation about what is livability? What does that really look like in the 21st century as, as well as, as in the 20th? And so I don't want to have a prejudged position on what is or what is not livable, or what is or what is not density. I really want to sincerely come into this with an open mind to say, can we find some sort of a balance where we can have a realistic way of dealing with 40,000 or 50,000 people that are going to want to move here? Because we have quality of life, I admit that. And they're not going to stay away because we wish them to. They'll come here for the same reasons we live here, because it's a great place to live. And that's why they're going to come. It's why they're already coming. And the statistics, if you look every year, are proving that that rate of growth is already occurring, has been. So we either have to confront it and face it and talk about it, as we're doing now, which is great, or we just kind of bury our head in the sand and play whack-a-mole. And I don't think that's really the solution any of us want. So in a way, I'm grateful for this conversation. As difficult as it is, we have to confront the fact that density and livability are two parts of a conversation we absolutely have to reach some sort of consensus on.
Alan, you got the last word.
Yeah, well said, Chris, and I, and that's absolutely true. The, but one of the key factors of that is how these, all of this stuff we've been talking about today impacts neighborhoods is different for different parts of the neighborhood, different parts of the city. And, and we're, and I don't want us to treat it like it's cookie cutter. So what happens in one part of the city is going to have, is, is good, may be very not good in other parts of the city. I, I, you know, part of the reason we did a special area zone around the universities because it had completely different pressures because of the university and student housing and the type of housing that goes with it that, that aren't in the other parts of the city. And so we, I, if there's a way, and maybe staff can address this when we come back, is, is there a way that we don't have to cookie cutter all of this, that some parts of the city that have different pressures can have different kinds of rules than other parts? Just thought I got.
Is that a question?
That is a question, then it can be answered later.
Could be, okay. I, I hope the answer is yes. Staff have any final word?
We'll just work with the mayor and others about the timing of coming back on any of these conversations. It sounds like there's more than a couple, so we'll just work with the mayor on scheduling some things.
Meeting is adjourned.
John, we have an opening on the 25th.